I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America. We are in public, we should just answer. I think I visible with literature.
Two.
For all. Okay. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that the meeting is given in a revised annual meeting notice which will be open to Harold Duse's record. Also, the Taddy Park and poster on the PCCC website and board of boards on November fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
Well, Paul, my my name is Paul.
Senator.
You, Trustee Otter.
Here.
Oh, I heard that. Thank you. Trustee Drakeford. Trustee Golden, President, welcome back.
Thank you.
Trustee Deane today.
President.
Trustee Moody.
President.
Trustee Nutter.
President. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Loud and clear.
Okay.
Trustee. Trustee Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Candace.
Present.
Chairman Marcos Absolvente.
Okay, it's first order of business is consideration of the minutes of the order fifteen, twenty twenty-three, word trustee Deane. Are there any corrections for the minutes? There are no correction. Seven minutes.
It doesn't matter. I just have one, you were there. I was in the house. Under. Salem Shayon Woods, Director of Developmental Math Programs. Okay. Where are you now? On page eight. Page eight. The replacement for Heather. Set Lucello.
Well, which one is it?
Say it forward down.
My question is that it's. The page before page seven, it says Heather Lucello. Was the nursing facility. Correct. She resigned. Right, right. And so. This person is replacing her. In the math program, I don't, that confused me. Yes. It's a, it's. So very often when we have it, every time we have a vacant physician. You know, we've, we've had to cut over the years about forty, more than forty positions from the college. Because enrollment went down, so we had to right-size the college and have less employees. So when, when an employee leaves, now one of the things we tried to do is not lay anybody off. And we've been fortunate, we have not had to lay anybody off. We've done everything through attrition. But every time a physician opens up, we reevaluate it. And we take a look at what is the most important position we can fill right now. So Dr. Deane and her staff made, made the determination that at this point, rather than refilling this position in the nursing department, we would. Create this position. Oh, so this person did not chase her. No, but, but replace their slot at the college. We, we, we've got two hundred and eighty slots for full-time employees. So this person took one of the full-time slots that we had. Motion by trustee Deane today, in a second. Second. Second by trustee. On resolution number one, consideration of the order fifteen, twenty twenty-three minutes. Trustee Otter.
Abstain.
Trustee Drakeford. Abstain. Trustee Golden.
Staying.
Trustee Deane today.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Nutter.
Yes.
The phone. Trustee Paul. Oh, trusty Paul. You're only on minutes. I see you. She says yes. Trustee Ramirez is absent. Uh, trustee Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dennis. And trustee Chairman Marcos was abstaining motion. Okay. So you, you've got this crowd of people here. Tonight to perform an important task. So. I, I left the copy here at your places of, of the colleges strategic plan which you approved last year. And as, as we said last year, this, this is. What we work on. This is, this is how we spend our time here every week, trying to move forward on each of these things. What you usually find when they take a look at colleges to get in trouble. And they get in trouble because they didn't follow and didn't do what they said they were going to do. They kind of get off on tangents and they go in different directions. And that's where colleges go astray. Uh, we are, we spend a lot of time trying to make sure that, that we stick on this plan. So at our convocation on August thirtieth, I gave you one of the pages from this program at the convocation. We spent a, a good deal of time with the whole college community, giving them an update on what we've been working on, what we've been doing, how we are working toward. Meaning all of these things that are strategic priorities. So we had these folks. Presented the college community, we thought it would be perfect to present to the board of trustees as well. So, uh, I don't know, Jackie, are you kicking us off?
Yes.
All right. Hey, Jackie, five people speaking. If you want.
Okay, so there are five strategic priorities. And we were probably not going to be addressing every item under every strategic priority. But I got as many people I could for tonight's meeting. And we're going to start with the first strategic priority, which is increasing student completion, data analysis and impact, high-impact practices. And I want Nancy Silvestro, Peter Hines, Dr. Royal, Dr. Hunt, and Thomas Moore to kick it off.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Silvestro, I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Teaching and Learning, formerly faculty member for thirty-five years. Um, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about engaging learners with innovative pedagogy. Um, so through the Center for Teaching and Learning and other areas of the college, we offer professional learning workshops for faculty. To promote and support the integration of high-impact practices, uh, which are nationally recognized as e-portfolios, career readiness, skills, integration, and service learning. And we also offer book discussion groups, communities of practice. Uh, we bring in expert guest speakers on that focus on diversity, equity, engagement and completion, uh, culture of care, trauma-informed pedagogy, and student engagement and more.
Uh, Peter Hines, Dean of Academic Support Services. Uh, in order to allow students to complete their programs in time, we want to make sure we have the correct courses being offered, correct pathways available to them. Unfortunately, with many of our students going part-time, many of our students varying between morning classes, evening classes and the like. Uh, that's not always a very easy thing to plan out. We did a lot of data mining in this last year, we're developing better pathways for those students to be able to complete their programs within the prescribed two years, making sure that the courses they need are available and, uh, they're all set.
Yeah, why don't you give a couple of statistics?
That's number five.
Oh, you're good.
All right. We're all gonna be there a couple of times. Okay.
Good evening, Tom, we're on the Assistant Dean for Career, Career Professional Badness and Experiential Learning. Uh, we did a lot of different things this year, one being over this past academic year, one being taking career services out of the student affairs side and bringing it into the academic affair side. So that we could more closely integrate it into the advisement process for student and what we're calling a caseload advisement process, which I'm sure others will be able to speak a little bit further about tonight. So, uh, we did that as well as collaborating with Nancy and her staff in the Center for Teaching and Learning to develop a community of practice with our faculty members that's going to be bringing career readiness and has already started to. Uh, career readiness skills into the classroom, so specific, really deliberate ways of infusing career readiness into curriculum, uh, for our students. A couple of the highlights that we have, and we talk about aligning these pathways and services, uh, with the need to emphasize career development and lifelong learning, we have a tool called Focus Two. Uh, which is an assessment tool that we use, helps students select majors, explore occupations, and then actively engage in the career development process. Currently, we have just over five thousand students that have used that tool so far to date, uh, and it's now part of the academic advisement process, which is really great. We have a couple of other tools that we use with them, like an am I in the right major survey, a college to career checklist, and what we have is called Panther Pathway. Excuse me, Panther Pathway packets, uh, and these are really designed for each specific pathway that students can start to look into their major, explore these kind of things in the beginning. So that hopefully they're making informed decisions as they move through their academic process. And another one, speaking with what we did with Nancy, uh, is collaborating with Center for Teaching and Learning Development, Work Readiness Skills Integration Toolkit, which we've been using with that community practice. Uh, we just met last week to be able to start to look at some service learning opportunities that we might be able to engage with. Uh, and these are all based out of the NAES competencies, I know I spoke with everybody last year when I came, uh, during the spring about NAES, so it's the National Association of Colleges and Employers. And we really try to use them as the backbone as we develop these campuses and incorporate in the classroom.
Oh, good evening, uh, I'm Michael Hunt, I'm the Assistant Dean for Developmental English and ELS. So, uh, as it relates to developmental English, uh, the students can now enroll in accelerated programs. So currently, students are able to take DEO two-five along with Comp One. Uh, DEO two-five functions as a supplemental course to assist students who are taking Comp One. Uh, another thing that we've, uh, we've attempted to do is, um, create an enrichment program for the DE ten, uh, Academic English One. And in creating the enrichment program, it allows students to kind of be accelerated into the next level, which would be DE twenty. Uh, one of the other things that we piloted, uh, this past summer is, uh, DO fifteen, which is an accelerated course. So in the past, what would happen is if a student came in at the DE ten level, uh, they would have to take a semester of DE ten, then another semester of DE twenty. And so in, in kind of revamping the program, the goal is to be able to have students in the accelerated program. Where they can take both courses, um, in one semester as opposed to taking it over a course of a year and using up financial aid. Um, the other thing as it relates to the ELS. Uh, our ELS students are permitted to enroll in specific, uh, general education college courses. You know, while they complete, um, ENR one oh seven and ENW one oh seven, um, in order, in order to earn credits for their degree, degree completion. Um, ELS students also receive reinforcement of instruction and learning that, that occurs by attending and reading. By attending the reading and writing labs at an academic support center. Thank you.
Hi, and then, um, we, in admissions and in conjunction with our institutional research area, we developed, um, a dashboard. Last summer to track our admission applications and then our enrollments, and we were able to use historic data. To sort of follow along and predict where we were going to end up in terms of applications and enrollments. So it's a, it's, it's early stages for predictive analytics in the admissions area, but we're going to continue to follow through on this sort of, um, strategy. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Any questions?
Oh, okay.
Before we. Definitely, but I'm just curious, are these priorities are, are the ones that are at the highest impact, is the data, or are they all the same? No. It's interesting you'd ask that question. We've, we've, we've been spending time, how do we present something and not make, and make it clear that it's not in a ranked priority? Oh, so they're not ranked at all? No. Oh, okay. No, and that's why we have like dots here instead of numbers and stuff, you know, there's, you gotta list something first. So it's good, it, it always gets implied that it's, but when you go one, two, three, four, five, that makes it even more clear that. So we, we've done this intentionally to try and, you know. So essentially, the ones on the bottom are just as important. Absolutely. If, if, if not more important.
Speaking for the ones on the bottom, more important.
I, I would just go back to. What, uh, Michael would talk about there in terms of acceleration. And it just, I, I think make it a little clearer how the DE twenty-five and the Comp One, how that works together.
So currently, the way it's set up is, it's a paired course. So, um. Comp One is three credits, DEO two-five is another three credits. So, you know, as students are learning how to structure essays, um, how to structure our formal level, formal writing at the college level. Uh, the DEO two-five course functions as a supplement to assist those students who, um, in the past may have been in DEO two-twenty, DE, oh, DE twenty and gone to Comp One. This allows those students to kind of leapfrog DE twenty, be in, um, Comp One and still get the supplement that they need to, uh, so that way they're successful in, um, in Comp One.
Yeah, these are students who entered the college not ready for college-level work. And what we're, what, what used to happen is they got put into this course that was below college level, which tended to be. Disturbing to them. Remedial. Remedial, and, and it, and it, it was, number one, we didn't get great results from the students taking it, that they didn't pass in great numbers. And then, even if they did, it delayed how long it was going to take them to complete a degree. So they've come up with a way of taking these two courses at the same time. You're taking your college-level course, but you're getting a whole nother course that's supporting you while doing. And because of that, the students don't lose time, they have, they're, they. They don't get the stigma of taking remedial classes, even though one of their courses is remedial, but they're also taking the college course at the same time. And it's, it's proving successful.
And they're also now, they have the opportunity to take additional college-level courses with that. And the preliminary research is showing that they're actually doing better in those classes than students who go right into the college-level EN one oh one course. Yeah. Okay, so the second strategic priority is strengthening community engagement and partnerships within PCCC community. And I'd like to have Todd Surber and, uh, Dr. Royal.
Yeah, sure. Do you, do you okay if I jump in real quick?
Yeah.
Just because I want to tag off of what, uh, Dr. Hunt presented on. So we had a couple of new initiatives in dual enrollment, and one of them was partnering with College Achieve, which is right around the corner. Uh, with that, we believe is going to be a strong feeder school for, for the college. And we brought in, uh, forty-five of their sophomores and juniors, and they took the EN one oh one with the DE twenty-five. So they tested just below college level for English. So we delivered to them on campus, here on campus, two sections of the English one oh one with the DE twenty-five course. And we started off with an orientation, we made a big deal about it, we had very strong support from the high school, so they would have a session in the high school on this subject matter as well. Um, and those students passed their English one oh one at nearly eighty percent. And these are sophomores and juniors, so we were really excited about that course and the students and their success in that course. So that was for dual enrollment. And then the other, um. New thing or the expansion that we did in dual enrollment this year is we expanded our, what we're calling our Achieve thirty group, and this is when seniors are here on campus. Taking their senior year full-time with us in all of our, in the college classes. So these students test into college level after their junior year, and then they come on campus. Um, and take their full senior year, and they get credit for, um, college credit and then credit for their senior year in high school at the same time. And this was, this, we were really excited this year because we had a large number of these students who actually enrolled here after completing that senior year. So it was a little, it was close to forty percent that came and then enrolled, um, with us full-time this fall. Uh, and they, during their senior year, they got those thirty credits, so it was, it was super exciting. And we, oh, and we add, so with more students than we've done in previous years, and we added three high schools to this program.
And then. Todd Surber, Vice President of Institutional Advancement. This year, an institutional advancement in collaboration with our community-based partners, uh, the college developed several new initiatives that were designed to connect local residents to big jobs in our regional economy. Uh, these are in growing and emerging industries such as solar and clean energy, healthcare, also a lot of other technology. So first, we received a grant from the U.S. Department of Labor, uh, to launch a new solar training initiative. So within the next three years, five hundred local residents will be trained and certified on how to install solar panels. Uh, this would be an entry-level opportunity of people when we get into that field, but at the same time, we're also going to be creating a new college-level certificate so that individuals can continue. Um, along a career ladder towards, um, higher level, higher paying opportunities in the clean energy industry. Uh, our partners in that initiative, the New Jersey Institute in Technology, the Sage County Workforce Development Board, and also the Greater Jackson Opportunities Industrialization Center. Uh, second, we received a ten million dollar grant from the state, uh, to create the new, uh, Center for Integrated Health Sciences, that's going to be on our state campus. Uh, that will allow us to consolidate eight of our, uh, health care certificate and degree programs and also support new program development, like surgical technology. Uh, so we're really excited about that. Several of the partners that we've had for many years in healthcare, such as St. Joseph's, uh, fully named hospital, also Quest Diagnostics will be part of that project as well. Uh, and finally, we received funding from the state also to create a new automotive technology center in Wayne. Uh, so this will allow space for local residents to be able to come and learn how to repair automobiles, um, also get involved in auto body collision. Um, and to, uh, maintain and repair electric vehicles as well. Uh, we're working with Ford Motor Company, Subaru, uh, a local labor union that has an apprenticeship program. Um, and several of the local school boards are involved in that as well. So that's great because currently, um, if somebody in our county wants to go and get that type of training at a secondary level. You know, they would have to go to one of the very high-class private hair schools or even out of the county, get that training. So this will create opportunities right here, you know, in our.
Okay, the third strategic priority is providing innovative academic programs and training that meet the current and future needs of students, employers, and the community. And we have presenters Tom Moore, Maria Martin, Nancy Silvestro, and Susan Gold, and me.
Sure. All right, so, um, my name's Susan Golden, I'm the Vice President for Strategic Initiatives, I oversee our Office of Institutional Research. That administers the Community College Survey of Student Engagement every so often in the spring semester. Um, the results from the spring twenty twenty-three survey revealed that PCCC students earned higher scores in the student effort category of questions than students at other institutions. In fact, when they normed the scores at other institutions, it was fifty point zero, and our students scored sixty-one point nine when they characterized their own student effort. So that's really good, they say that they're working hard and putting a lot of effort into their college. Um, for comparison, PCCC scores in the other, uh, survey categories were as follows. Active and collaborative learning, that's one of the categories, they scored fifty-five point nine, again, over the normal fifty point oh. Support for learners, they scored fifty-three point two, which again is higher than the average. Academic challenge, slightly higher than the average, fifty point seven. And student faculty interaction, they scored fifty point zero. Uh, we shared an executive summary of this survey results for college leadership, and full reports are available on our internet site, if anybody wants to take a look, can make sure to get this.
Sure. So I have a couple of, um, bullet points in this area that I'm really happy and proud to report on. So the first one is create an environment with students as active agents of their own education. So. Supported by the researchers in higher education best practices, we are moving away from viewing our students as lacking in some way. And, uh, we are focusing on the assets that they bring to their learning. So not just looking at where they're, they are deficient, but the strengths that they're bringing into the education. And we are working with faculty to identify and implement best practices to help faculty build on the students' strengths when they're designing, um, their teaching and grading. So an example is, uh, this summer, we had a group of faculty attend several workshops about how to make their syllabus more engaging. Because we have found over the years that the students don't read the syllabus, and the faculty always say it's in the syllabus, but they don't read it. So these faculty, uh, learned how to create a syllabus that we call a liquid syllabus, where the professor can update information on the syllabus as it's needed. And it's available in a digital form, and it's colorful and engaging, and, um, it's not mean, it's not like you must, it's like, you know, it is, you're highly advised to take advantage of the lab area. So it's more friendly and helps the students have a greater sense of belonging. And another thing we're doing in this area that I think is really cool, we have a group of faculty, uh, they're mid-level faculty, and the group is called the Future Forward Faculty Group. And, um, they research, um, really cutting-edge best practices in higher education or emerging practices. Um, and, um, then they implement them in their classes, and then they share what they've learned with other faculty. So, uh, this semester, they are researching alternatives to traditional grading. And, um, they're trying them out in their classes, and then in the spring, they're going to, um, present what they found to other faculty members and support them in making their, their syllabus more engaging, their grading better. And then I have another one, so I might as well get it all off my chest. So the other one is ensure faculty are proficient in current and evolving pedagogical technology and best practices. So again, through the Center for Teaching and Learning and other areas of the college, so a lot of this professional learning is supported by the grants and other areas of the college as well as the Center for Teaching and Learning. So we've been really focusing a lot on using technology to engage and enhance student learning in innovative ways. So faculty last year were able to earn a micro credential or a badge on the use of educational technology, like. Some of the hot topics are EdPuzzle, Padlet, LitGrid, ePortfolios, um, so different kinds of technology to, to engage the students. Um, and I want to add that it's like really important for us to remember that the current students we have don't learn the way the past students do. They don't learn the way we do or we did, and we really need to adapt to their way of learning. So especially now with this explosion of artificial intelligence, um, we're really working hard to learn how to use artificial intelligence. And bring it into the classroom and make learning effectively. We know that we can't stop students from using artificial intelligence, so we're working towards getting the faculty to identify ways that where they can incorporate the use of. Um, artificial intelligence into their classes to support their learning. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Maria Martin, I work here at the college as the Assistant Dean of Advancement and Credit for Prior Learning. Um, so with, uh, prior learning, the college recognizes, right, that learning happens outside of the classroom. However, as an institution, we have to ensure that if we're offering students credit for their learning, that we're doing it in a systematic way that's, um, transparent and that is taking up. Caring for our academic integrity. So this past year, we did is we focused on building the infrastructure for us to be able to do that. Um, and, uh, we have, we revamped our policy on prior learning, um, and it was approved in the academic council. Um, we also have worked with the marketing department to have a website in order to put our offerings out for students to be able to see. Um, we've also worked on incorporating prior learning and discussions about prior learning into the, um, academic advising process for students. As well as work with faculty to determine which industry credentials we are going to accept here at the college, and we're going to allow for students to turn that into, into credit. And then also, um, our military, so our military personnel, making sure that we are consistently evaluating their transcripts. Because there's learning that happens in the military, as we know, and we want to be able to, uh, provide our students with, um, academic credit. And the value of doing that for our students is, uh, making sure that we are offering them the opportunity to get their degrees, uh, in faster manner. Um, so those are just some of the things I would do this past year.
Uh, when it comes to, uh, priority number three, looking at strengthening employer engagement, increasing experience or learning opportunities, a couple of highlights that we've had so far. Working with Tom, the Office of Institutional Advancement, and his team and the PCC Foundation, trying to leverage some of the grants that we have and the resources available with career components involved in that. Uh, to develop an experiential learning initiative called Panthers to Professionals. Uh, this is going to allow PCC students, uh, opportunities to engage with companies and organizations for a variety. for a variety of different experiential opportunities. So we're talking about micro internship, shadowing opportunities, mentoring, coach on call, a variety of different ways that gets them to engage with professionals, whether they're going to those locations and the companies are having those professionals come on campus. And lastly, we also invest in a tool called Handshake. This was implemented last academic year, and it is a proprietary tool that allows students to be able to look at career options and then investigate jobs and internships as well, too.
And I just want to remind the board and thank them that you approved two, three new academic programs, academic degree programs last academic year. We have now approval on supply chain management from the state. And yesterday, it was we got approval on surgical tech, and we are currently working with a consultant for biotech, and that will be coming up shortly. So it was a very productive year. Okay, the next priority is enriching the student experience, and I have Dawn Norman.
Hello, I'm Dawn Norman. I'm the Dean of Academic Advancement. One of the things we try to do in academic advisement and we're really working on every day is to help students see advisement, not as something that they do only when it's time to register, but something that they engage in, a process that they engage in throughout their entire time here at the college. So to that end, we have implemented the proactive caseload management model of academic advisement. What happens with this model is that every student is assigned an advisor when they enter the institution. They can look on their degree, their degree evaluation and see who their advisor is, and the advisor can also look and see who their advisees are. So that helps this connection form even before the student meets their advisor. They know their advisor's name, and they know who it is that they should see. And with this model, new students have been assigned an advisor, as well as undeclared students have been assigned an advisor who will help them proactively look at career services and give them information related to majors to help them make an informed decision about a major as soon as possible. Also, new students are invited to participate in a revised new student orientation. And the great thing about this orientation is that we've now added a component that includes friends and family of the students, so that when they come, their loved ones come and also are there, and we teach them how to support this person as a college student. And then, as you know, whenever you're implementing something new, one of the goals should also be training and helping people learn how to implement the model. So we really focus on training and professional development of the advisors, and we formed the advisors group. Now, this group of advisors meets twice a month, and these are advisors from every program, every support program, and every campus. So this is one time, twice a month that we get together, and we talk about advising issues, but we also receive information from faculty related to their programs, so that everybody at one time is updated, and that we are all operating consistently across the campus when it comes to advisement. The advisors group also participated in an advisors institute this summer, and this twenty-hour hybrid course was developed by the advisement team, and it covered various topics, which included review, a review of policies and procedures, best practices, as well as really great conversations with college leadership. Lastly, the new student experience has been incorporated with career and professional readiness and credit for prior learning. All of this has been incorporated into academic advisement. So this process is now a robust process that is more than advisement about courses, but it really helps the student holistically deal with all aspects of being a college student. The goal is to move advisement from being transactional to being transformational. And we believe that this model is helping us get to where we want to be.
Thank you. Rebecca?
So, um, so I'm going to, in terms of the enriching the student experience, I'm going to talk about onboarding students in a frictionless momentum toward reticulation. So this term, the terms come from EA, right, of course. So we use their, their research and their, their studies to sort of drive the work that we're doing through the enrollment process. And this ties into what Nancy was saying earlier. When students come in, we really are trying to engage them in a way so that they can become their own agents of their educational experience and develop an authorship of their educational experience. So that's sort of the stage we're trying to set when students come in. And again, we're trying to emphasize their assets when they come in and their strengths, but at the same time, we're talking about their responsibilities and then our responsibilities as well. So it's, we try to integrate that all together in the student experience. And one of the things we really try to do with students is guide them in their processes as they're enrolling in the college, rather than doing it for them. So we're going to help, we're going to show them how to log onto the portal. We're going to show them how to check their financial, rather than doing it for them, doing it for them, so they, so they don't learn that. So we're trying to guide them through that, so that then they can sort of own that process and do it for themselves next time, or come to us for help, but like, we're trying to teach them as they go along, so that when they then enter the classroom, they already have that foundation. So that's what, that's what we're trying to get to with that frictionless momentum.
Online tutoring became vital and a necessity during COVID, when we were at distance. But now that we're back on campus, it's still just as important. We've seen two times as many of the student visits to the online center happen after hours, but after seven PM and before nine AM, that happened during our workout. So having an on-campus tutoring center, doing it face-to-face, is going to serve a certain number of students, but so many of our students with family obligations, work obligations, and everybody else need that twenty-four-seven service. So we've had over two thousand students take advantage of that service with over ten thousand sessions over a given academic year. Of that, the recommend rate based on student surveys is ninety-six percent. So students, this is working for them. Now, that's because so many companies grew during COVID. So many companies took advantage of that necessity. They grew faster than maybe they could have managed. We have found some quality issues that occurred within tutor.com. So as such, we're creating some in-house competition. We are getting some in-house tutors specifically towards writing. They'll be trained by our English department, tied a little bit more directly towards our assignments. So they're in conjunction with our faculty. It's not just they're going to someone to say, I've got a paper. They could say, I'm going with Professor Alsbrook's assignments about a specific topic, and we'll have a little bit more direct communication and training in that respect. And we're looking to launch that this semester.
So before we leave this priority, I just want to say that the last priority, transforming the library to a learning commons, is well on its way. If you pass the entrance of the library or the learning commons, I mean, you will see that it's a totally different entrance. And if you look inside the library, you'll see that we're trying to reduce our stacks. And when you finally see the library, you're just going to be amazed. It's definitely going to be a place where there'll be a lot of collaboration, and students actually will be able to eat in part of the library and walk out into the patio. It'd be good. Okay, number six is ensuring the college's sustainability.
Yes.
Rebecca? Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
The College's Foundation, which is the fundraising arm of the college, returns to in first events that passed here for the first time since the pandemic. So we held three events. We had our five K run block for completion, which was done in collaboration with our Viper Capital Honor Society. We also had the celebration of giving event, and the foundation's annual foundation scholarship gala was held in June. So cumulatively, across those three events, we were able to raise a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for scholarship support. And also, another goal that we had this past year is that we saw an opportunity for growth within our name scholarship program. And these scholarships are really important to us because they're a permanent source of funding for our students. They're expected to continue from one year to the next. So we did a major campaign in the spring. We were able to generate twenty-seven new named scholarships that are available to students this current academic year, and we're looking to build upon that in the future. And just want to thank the trustees, the college community, who was so generous in their support and being able to make that possible.
If you knew how much we talked about the course schedule, we wouldn't come back. When we talk about the sustainability of the college, my private sector experience with profitability sneaks in. So forgive me if I start talking like Stephen Hardy and talk about profit here. We can't be profitable as a college when we run classes that are empty. We can't be profitable as a college if we run classes, if we run too many classes. What we've done with the course schedule in working a lot of data analysis, we've worked on things like exploring different modalities for teaching, or for class delivery, excuse me, so concurrent classes. We've looked where there's redundancies. If two classes can fulfill the same requirement, do we need to offer both of them, or do we offer them in alternate semesters? If a class is only running to fulfill a program requirement, and it needs to run to fulfill that program requirement, but do we need to run it every semester, or can we do it annually? And we've revised the schedule, what used to just be a rollover exercise, we have gotten this down to nitty-gritty that you don't want to think about. So when Dr. Rose was asking for the numbers before, because he likes to hear these. When we took this on back in twenty twenty, our fill rate in classes was around seventy-one percent. But it's not bad, but we've gotten it up to eighty-four percent right now. Okay, now, this is also actually a little bit lower than it was last year. But one of the other projects we took on this year, we increased the course sizes. Where we were holding at twenty-five students per class, where it could be managed, in conjunction with the faculty and everybody else, we raised those to twenty-seven, thirty-two, and so on. Where it couldn't be managed, where it doesn't make sense pedagogically, we work with the faculty in places like DE in some of the lab sites and so on, we still kept it there to keep it all pedagogically sound. Okay, so that went, so that's, that's down from, like I said, seventy-one percent to up to eighty-four percent. Then in the number of sections, similarly, if we're running too many sections, you've got empty classes, you've got faculty, you've got more faculty teaching the same classes that need to be done. We found a lot of redundancy there. We've moved down from eight hundred eighty-seven sections to seven hundred forty-three sections this semester. That's down around sixteen percent. And again, that's with a two and a half percent increase right now in enrollment. And this is without losing any courses. This is without saying you can't get something done. We're still making sure all that's available. Yes, sir.
What are the minimum number of students that have to be in a class for it to be sustainable?
It's going to depend who you ask, is it Dr. Rose or Dr. Kennedy?
For a class to be, to break even.
Okay.
It's probably fifteen or sixteen. We can't have fifteen or sixteen, though, as the minimum, because there are certain classes that can't run, you know, which we could never get that many. So we kind of set a minimum of twelve in a class, so that we certainly have an average that's considerably above the minimum. I'm not going to tell you there's not a few classes that are running, you know, with eight or nine, there are, but.
And part of that, too, is.
That's Jackie.
We may, we may.
Do you have a comment on that? Not that you disagree with him, of course.
Of course, I would never disagree. But, you know, there are classes that are running well above that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm wondering, what course, if you get a degree, it might be class that you have to go to class, obviously.
Yeah, exactly. And we conflict that with, we will have another class that'll have thirty-five. We'll do an introduction to sociology course that will run with thirty-five.
Yeah.
And that will bring the average to a more tolerable spot.
But the goal is to find the sweet spot here, and that's where, you know, Peter has more spreadsheets than you could ever possibly imagine. You know, I've done a lot of analysis, and that's why it was a strategic priority. I mean, this is a big deal. If you have a hundred less sections running, and you, even if they're all taught by adjuncts, which they're not.
Yeah.
You know, but even if they were all taught by adjuncts, each course, you know, by the time we pay the salary and benefits, is at least probably thirty-two hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars that is costing us to run that course, and you start multiplying that.
It's a hundred.
It's, and remember, that's per semester. So it gets significant over time, and you know, we'd rather spend that money on putting more tutors in and doing those kind of things that are going to help do somebody, you know, a lot of the things that they all spoke about tonight cost money. And if we're able to reallocate, you know, give students the same courses, that give students all the courses they need, but we're able to save some money and put it towards other things, that's.
Oh, no, no, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just asking, because obviously there's an attrition factor as well.
Oh, absolutely.
One of the big ways we have attacked that, one of the areas we had significant problems with the satellite campuses, right, where we'd have a lower enrollment at Wannacure or Passaic, and therefore, you wouldn't want to not run courses. You wouldn't want to have that campus available and not have something. We tried to make those courses specific to the concurrent sections. So we'd attach a remote section to do a Zoom class in conjunction with that. Even if you only had seven or eight students in that class at Passaic, you'd then have fifteen more on a Zoom call, right? With the conjunction with the IT department, everybody else, we made sure those classrooms were available to that. So now you've got a class that's legitimately with one faculty member at twenty-five, thirty students. We have in our music technology program, we're trying something new this semester. We're running a class at both the Wannacure Campus and the Patterson Campus simultaneously. They're doing a technology program for music technology. So to try to make those things more viable, and to make it so we're not canceling classes with five or six, to try to combine them as much as possible.
Just to mention technology for a minute, just before, you know, look at this room. A couple of months ago, if you remember, we used to have, you know, Alex or Chris standing over there with the camera and doing that, and we had, you know, speakers here. Now we've installed, these cameras are mounted up on the walls, and the microphones are mounted to the ceiling. And this is a much less, you know, intrusive way of doing it. It's much more natural. That's what we've done in our classrooms as well, where we're able to provide a better experience for students while doing it, so it's.
Legacy of pandemic.
Partially, yeah. Yeah. Questions? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
So I mean, just to reiterate what Jackie said earlier, you know, these were the people we could round up on a Tuesday night to come talk to. There's a lot more going on that we couldn't even talk to you about it. We didn't want to be here for several hours. So, but, you know, we're, we're really trying to remain as focused as we can on, you know, doing what we said we were going to do. If we do all these things, I think you can tell they are truly moving the college forward, so we're excited with that. All right, I'll go on to just some, my report, just a couple of things. One, as you heard tonight, right now, as of earlier today, the enrollment for the semester. Remember, there's two ways to look at enrollment. You can look at enrollment in terms of the number of students that are here. But what more important to us is the number of credits that they are taking, the number of classes that they're enrolled in. So the great news is, you heard Peter say that we're up about two and a half percent in terms of headcount right now, but as of today, we're up about five and a half percent. They turned to credit hours. And that's certainly what makes Stephen very happy is that we're saving old money, and that's, so that's very good. And, you know, this is, you know, for the past couple of years, you've heard that most of higher education has been down in enrollment. Now, we are not back to our pre-pandemic levels. I mean, and very few colleges are. You know, the Ivy League schools are, but very few colleges are back to pre-pandemic levels. But the fact that we're, you know, it looks like we're going to have a very, last year, we were up a little. This year, it looks like we're up a little more, and that's, that's what our goal has been, to do that. So we're excited that that's happening, and that's good stuff. I just, we'll certainly give you more notice of this again, but, you know, and we all heard, this is our year where we're going through our eight-year accreditation through Middle States. So the first thing that's going to happen with Middle States is the chair, the person who's going to chair our team next spring does a preliminary visit to the college, and he's coming on November first to visit with us. He'll spend an entire day here meeting with all different groups of the college. One of the groups I can guarantee he sort of wanted to meet with is the board. And certainly, we know many of you are busy here today and they don't be able to be here. But any of you who can, just, you know, it'll be around lunchtime on November first. Uh, that will ask you to be here, will probably, you know, do it here. If some could only join, you know, via Zoom, that's fine. Uh, but if you can be here for lunch. So the chair of our team is Dr. Thomas Siganepi, who is the recently retired president of Bronx Community College. You always try to find somebody who, who leads the team, who leads a similar school to us. You know, with a similar population, you, you know, you don't, you, you want to make sure that, that the people have some feel for, for what we're doing here. So uh, Dr. Siganepi will be here on November first and we hope that uh, we'll, we'll be sending you more information.
Is that an interview or just like a discussion or how's that?
It's a discussion, especially this, you know, on, on November first, he's here just as a preliminary visit. This is not the team. You know, he's gonna come back with six or seven people in uh, probably early April, where they will spend three days. They'll kind of come on a Sunday, they'll leave on Wednesday. And, you know, they'll usually conduct about two hundred interviews while they're here. We are, we are in the process right now of preparing a self-study where we're looking at ourselves and uh, a lot of these folks who are sitting, you know, out here today are spending a considerable amount of time writing this book. We're, we're writing a book right now and it's, it's right now over a hundred pages. And we are, and thousands and thousands of pages of evidence that we will have to submit uh, next spring, showing that we are meeting the standards that all colleges have to meet. So what the team does is they will get all this information before they come on campus. And then they will, their job is a couple of things. Uh, one, if, if they like everything they see and everything we wrote looks good, they're just simply here for a couple of days to verify everything that we wrote to make sure we didn't make it up. And they, they will uh, it'd be a relatively easy time. Usually what happens, there's a couple of things in there that, you know, we are limited to a hundred pages of that we're able to say. And sometimes, you know, we're gonna try and put our best foot forward on those hundred pages, but sometimes there's something gonna lead out. So that's what they are gonna come and do and says, okay, we understand this, but we really want to try and, you know, figure this part out. What are you doing here and what are you doing there? And they'll be asking all those things and they'll be coming and talking to the board and one of the questions they're gonna ask you, how familiar are you with the strategic plan that the college has come up with? Do they ever talk to you about it? Do they ever give you updates on it? That's the type, kind of thing you'll, you know, you'll, you'll probably hear in terms of questions, you know. You don't, you don't, you don't have to have any of this memorized, but the fact that you remember that these, these folks came tonight and gave you a presentation on it, that, that, that goes a long way. Or, or if you remember approving it in the first place, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing that, you know, you wanna, you, you, you want to make sure, you know, but if you say that I don't ever remember talking about a strategic plan at the college, that would be a problem. So we're, you know, we're gonna make sure that, you know, we, we, we keep you in a loop on those kind of things if you'll, you'll do that. But that's why, that's why we presented our research and duty years and all that.
Dr. Rose, that meeting on, we're gonna be first. Is there gonna be in this room?
Yeah, probably. Probably. Well, we'll, we'll give you lots of notice of course. We'll tell you. Again, we don't need everyone, just as long as we have, have a couple of you. That'll be great. And, and last but not least is uh, we, we are scheduled for our board retreat on September thirtieth on Saturday morning. Uh, up at the Public Safety Academy. Um, we'll have breakfast at nine AM. We'll probably start about nine thirty AM. Um, and, and been working on coming up with an agenda to hopefully engage everybody and get everybody to, you know, we'll talk about everything from giving you some deep dive into our budget. Stephen's already working on a presentation for you that will, you know, be able to, you know, give you some education about what's going on. But we'll talk, you know, we want to confirm that you'd like meeting on Tuesdays at six o'clock and this, this works for you. Talk about committees that we may, may want to set up for the board of trustees, uh, just how we function, uh, you know, how we present materials to you and stuff like that. And just see ways you feel we can improve. Uh, you know, all this, the, the board packet, you know, you've got a, a huge amount of material here about all the purchases and details. Um, ten years ago, we did not provide that to the board. So we provided much less and board members at that time, you know, said they wanted more detail about the, the level of purchases. And we came up with some internal forms and things which hopefully made it easier for you to understand what we were doing. Uh, we, we need to know, is it, is, is this working for you? Is this enough? Is it too much? You know, and any of those kind, kind of things. So we, you know, we, we just want to make it so you have the information you need, but, you know, not too much, but a, enough. And, and, you know, so we'll, we'll be able to just in the kind of thing to do, give us a couple of hours to do it in a much more relaxed way than we're, we're able to do, you know, here. So we'll be up at the Public Safety Academy Saturday, September thirtieth, uh, nine AM and uh, we'll done by, hoping by twelve thirty or so. That's what I got.
Information.
Yep, we, uh, acceptance of grant awards awarded to the cultural affairs department, you know, they uh, just like so many of our departments, you know, you hear about other grants that we have, but that they do so many wonderful things around the county and uh, one of the requirements is that we accept some of those. You have purchase of included services. Um, one of the it appears that trust you today has a uh, conflict with one of the things that are on, on the agenda tonight. So we will pull that one off and build on it separately this evening. So that, that, that will be that easy. We're excited here that uh, we, you can see that there was a purchase of an aerial ladder truck from Pomp and Lakes, you know. Uh, I, I think as all of you know, that uh, we run the Public Safety Academy at the college and, you know, we train most of the fire people in this county, we train whether they're from the volunteer squads or even some of the paint squads like Patterson come through our Public Safety Academy. We're actually also training Jersey City uh, who are coming to our academy. They're paying us a premium to do that, which we're very pleased about. Uh, but one of the things is you want people to be able to train on equipment. You know, we don't have to have the best equipment there because, you know, we're not actually fighting the fires with, with this equipment. So it, it, you know, pop, when, when we look around, when, when we see a town that's retiring a, a truck that's still in good shape and still great for training purposes, and that's what we're able to find in, in uh, Pomp and Lakes. So we're, we're excited about that. One of these new trucks could cost, depending upon what it is, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. For a, for a new, that, that's the, we're getting to one that you're probably. Yeah. It costs seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for a new one, uh, and this and that for a fire truck. So, you know, we're really, that's a good one for, for that too. That's, that's exciting for us. So we're, we're happy to do that. I think we're good. We do not, unless anybody deals with it. We're good. Resolution number three.
Resolution number three with the Espa contract.
I have a motion to adopt resolution number three. Send resolution items that were to run through memorandum being. We, we accept you of. It's the contract.
Don't move.
Second.
Trustee Otter?
Yes.
Trustee Drayford?
I'm staying.
Trustee Blubbe?
Yes.
Trustee, the, the, they, they're staying, right?
Yep.
Oh, that's the rolling, yes. Trustee Moody?
Yeah.
Trustee Nutter?
Yes.
Trustee Poe? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannus?
Yes.
All right, now on the, but the motion will prove the contract with this one.
Be resolution number four, I guess.
Yes.
Resolution number four, do I have a motion?
I'll vote it. Trustee Otter?
Yes.
You, Trustee Drayford?
Yes.
Trustee Blubbe?
Yes.
Trustee Deinter?
Staying.
Uh, Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Nutter?
Yes.
Trustee Poe? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannus?
Yes.
Welcome back, Trustee Blubbe.
Welcome back. I, I have a comment. I think that the PPP tutor dot com idea is awesome. Because I can join in with the, an assignment for one of my professors. So with some of them did, I don't know, walk me through that. I think that 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 works for, for students who are nervous to discipline college. So give them a lot of better chance of survival and, and being able to be a successful, right? And that's what we want. Um, and I just, the dashboard, is that made with Tableau? Or the predictive analytics?
Yes, it was Tableau.
It was Tableau.
Yep.
That just works for me, right?
Yeah.
It, it does give great data. So that's all I have. So thanks. What else? Comments and a motion to adjourn.
Second. That works. Thank you all for welcoming that. Seven oh four.
Seven oh four.
Yes. We can hang on to this, I guess.
Yes.